Welcome to our monthly Board of Education meeting. We have a fine group of students here to lead us in the pledge of the flag. We're now at open session.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 3.2, approval of the open session agenda.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so approve. 3.3, it's a compliance board opinion summary that I like to read in open session so everyone's aware. Earlier this year, the open meetings compliance board received a complaint alleging violations by this board of the Open Meetings Act, largely concerning our procedure for entering closed sessions as well as the disclosures made prior to and after adjourning closed sessions. On May 17, 2018, the open meetings compliance board issued an opinion finding certain violations of the Open Meetings Act. Specifically, the compliance board opined that we were in violation of the act by failing to provide sufficient detail in our closing statement with regard to the topics to be discussed in closed session and the reasons for entering closed session; failing to provide sufficient detail in our closed session summary found in the meeting minutes, which is a recap of the topics actually discussed in closed session; failing to provide sufficient detail of the administrative functions performed by this board after recessing an open meeting into a closed session; failing to follow the statutorily required procedure for entering closed session on June 13, 2017, and August 9, 2017; providing incorrect information with regard to the start time of board meetings by providing the start time for the portion of the meeting that would remain open to the public rather than the time at which the board would convene an open session solely to vote to enter closed session and not posting each meeting on the board's website, though each meeting was posted on the school's master calendar. The compliance board acknowledged that prior to receiving the opinion, we already began adjusting our practices to better comply with the law. In that regard, after receiving the complaint, we began using the form recommended by the compliance board for our closing statement, which prompts us to provide all of the detail required by the act. We have updated our website to reflect the start time of both our closed session and subsequent open session, which allows members of the public to witness our vote to enter into a closed session if they so desire. We began the process of updating our website to ensure information about every scheduled meeting is available in multiple locations, and we have worked to increase the amount of detail provided in our closed session summaries. As a result, each of the violations found by the compliance board have already been addressed by this board, and we will continue to work toward our goal of maximum transparency with the understanding that certain discussions and information must remain confidential. 3.4. Over the last month, we've lost two members of our Board of Education, Wycomico County Public Schools family. Stephen Michael Ray was 42, passed away in May. He was county sheriff's office deputy first class and a coach at Mardella High School and a Mardella Springs fireman cadet. As a personal note, I coached Mardella soccer for four years, 2010 to 13, with Coach Ray. So it was a very difficult time for me and for everyone. And Janie Tooke Wade, affectionately known as Toogie, died in May 2018. For 54 years, she worked as an English translator for Wycomico County Public Schools. So it talks about her passion for education, a tireless advocate for local Hispanic children and their parents. 54 years says it all. We'll miss them both. So in your own way, let's please recognize their passing. Thank you. 3.5, the typical highlight of the open board meetings. The student representatives reports to the board. So I think Nick and Rowan are going to introduce the people that are going to succeed them in this, and you have others here. So I'm going to turn it over to you guys. Rowan. The floor is yours.
All right. One last time.
Hopefully not. Hopefully we'll see you back here.
True, hopefully not.
You can have the floor whenever you return.
Well, hello. Thank you for having us, board members and guests. My name's Rowan Osman. And I am the, or I was the former, I guess, executive board president for James &amp; Bennett High School. And today, it is my pleasure to introduce you to the new incoming executive board president for Bennett High. I'm sure many of you saw him at the award ceremony at Bennett last week. He was actually receiving the Lights of Literacy Award for his work helping older Pakistani women in this area assimilate to their new lives. I'm sure you've also seen him at Optimus Contest. He's very involved, and that is Rockin' League of Cots. So he's an amazing person, extremely hardworking, and I know he'll make a great president. I don't know if you want to say anything?
Just really excited, and I'm really looking forward to meeting all of you and talking about the issues here at Wycomico County.
We look forward to having you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for a great year.
Thank you, Rowan.
Absolutely.
And Nick? The floor is now yours.
Good afternoon, board members. How are you guys doing today?
Good, you?
Well, this will be my last time here in the Board of Education, which is very saddening, but it's time for a new year. So our president of the executive board at Wycomico High School unfortunately could not be here, but I would like to introduce him today. His name is Darren Nelson. Substituting him today is Gia Baltista. She is the first vice president. She is incredibly bright. She's also the president of the National Honor Society. She does Classics for Cause, and she was a finalist in the National Spelling Bee a couple of years ago as well, which is all amazing things. I have full faith that Darren and the rest of the other executive board officers will do a great job at representing Wycomico High School in the 2018-19 school year. So Gia's going to hand it off, and she will tell you the great things that are happening at WyHigh.
Yes, so thank you guys for having me. I'm excited to be back for my second meeting. So yeah, on May 19, WyHigh had its senior prom themed Black and Gold Masquerade at Dove Point. The memorable night started off in our school's auditorium for a grand march, and then the seniors and their guests danced the night away at Dove Point. Our freshmen recently participated in an opioid awareness assembly where they gathered in our auditorium to hear from former addicts and people in the medical field. The seminar was successful in teaching our freshmen about the dangers of drugs and the opioid crisis in our area. From the Step Up program, WyHigh saw great statistics in the differences between non-step up students and step up participants. In comparing these groups, referrals were lower and GPAs and attendance were higher amongst the step up students. Our seniors finally graduated on June 3, and I'm really proud to say that they raised over $1.6 million in scholarships, including Nick here. The ceremony went very smoothly with Rachel Walker giving the scholarly address. Our band and choir also performed the Alma Mater and other selections between speeches given by Dr. Hanlon, Mr. Brady, and some senior class student government officers. We will dearly miss our Class of 2018, but we cannot wait to see what they accomplish and how they will represent our school and our county in the future. WyHigh is finishing the school year strong with final exams coming this week. Though we are just ending this year, as a student government, we are also planning to create new traditions that start in the beginning of the next school year. First, we would like to partner with our PBIS at our school to create teams. That would be Team Blue and Team Gold that every student is randomly assigned to, kind of like Harry Potter houses. Like those houses, each team would be awarded points for having better attendance, less referrals, better grades, and better student participation in school events. That would eventually lead to a team trophy at the end of the year. We are also looking to create a back-to-school carnival that would really get students excited for starting school again and would really bring our community together at WyHigh. We are really excited for the coming school year, Darren and I, even though we have yet to start summer, and we can't wait to see our new ideas come to fruition. We hope everyone has a great summer, and again, thank you for having us today.
Thank you. We appreciate you leading us in the pledge as well, and we'd like to please recognize the other two students if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves. We appreciate you being here.
Oh, the representative from the other schools, I'm sorry. Parkside.
Hi, I'm Sarah Rungy, and this is Ashley Stearman. We're really sad our predecessor... Oh, closer. I'm sorry.
They're all just making faces, actually.
Thank you for having us. My name's Sarah Rungy.
I'm Ashley Stearman.
And sadly, Colleen Simpkins, our predecessor, couldn't be here today, but I know she'd be really excited for handing it over to us, and she did such a great job this past year as SJA president. This is Ashley, and she does field hockey and lacrosse and basketball. And she's a really dedicated Ram, to our Ram fam. And she just brings so much spirit to school, and she's so dedicated, and I think she'll do great as SJA president.
This is Sarah. I know she does, and I both do. We are an honor society, and at Parkside, we just had our awards. And then we both got a lot of awards from them. We got, we did academic awards, we had sports awards, you know. Just bringing in the Parkside spirit that, you know, we all love to have. We're excited to end the school year, and everyone's very excited to come back, even though, you know, summer's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We look forward to having you next year.
Thank you. We look forward to it. And so there's a lesson for students in what just, that I just did, because I'm reading from the book, but there were changes to the agenda that, that's why we have technology that I didn't click onto. So that's why I apologize. I did not know your names or say them out loud, so I've learned to use technology today. Give him a gold star. So this, we're in 3.6, which is public comment, and we have two public comments for today. So first, Ann Sokowsky?
I think everybody can hear me from up here.
Well, it has to be recorded, so...
Nikki, Nikki.
Can you move, can you get that mic?
Just take the mic over there.
Thank you. Thank you.
I want to thank the Wycomico County Board of Education for a piece of legislature that you passed a few months ago. We now have an elected school board in Wycomico County, which is nonpartisan. And you had a policy that there would be no partisan speeches in schools. But now that we have an elected school board that will be nonpartisan, I thought it would be a good idea that maybe the different schools' PTA meetings would want to have forums for their PTA meetings so the parents could meet the candidates for the school board. So I made a call, talked to Nikki, and she sort of took the ball and started bouncing with it, and the piece of legislature was passed. So I want to thank you, but I hope now that the different PTA presidents, program chairman, or principals will maybe use this as part of their programs for September and October so that the members of the community will meet the candidates for school board. Thank you.
Thank you. And then also, public comments, Mr. Dave Hanlon and Mr. George Whitehead.
Did you get any instructions from the superintendent?
I was waiting for someone to say something.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Hanlon and members of the school board. David and I are here to update you on the community book drive. As you may know, it was April 19 through May 19, the purpose of which were for, and we're going to update you on the results of this, to collect new and gently used books for distribution to nonprofits and the school system that will put them to use. A primary interest is books for children birth to age eight. To solicit funds in order to purchase books for children aged eight in Spanish, less than eight, in Spanish, French, Korean, to promote reading in books, to engage broad elements of the community in helping promote reading, and to highlight the literacy event. Dave is going to give you some statistics, and I'm going to do a little bit of shouting out to people in the school system who helped make this happen. So Dave, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, George. Thirty-seven organizations joined this effort this last year. The school system was a very heavy participant in that. There were drop sites located in this building at the central office, plus we had five high schools, and five public schools, rather, participated, and this alone is cause for celebration. Just to give you an idea, we collected a total this year of 13,500 books across the community, which is a 30% increase from last year, year one. Thirteen thousand is really an amazing number. Of that, 4,100 approximately came from five schools in the Wycomico County Public School system. We felt that was worthy of a special accolade. Just to break it down, WyHigh, Parkside, each collected about 200 books. James &amp; Bennett High School around 315, Mardella, 800. James &amp; Bennett Middle School, 2,616 books. So you all deserve applause. These books are going to go to 25 different organizations around the community, not-for-profits and government entities. The school system's also receiving some of those books. The school system's, last count we had was 1,116 books are coming to the school system in the Birth to Five category for the Judy Centers, Five to Eights, and Eight to Twelve. So 1,000 books are coming from the community, brand-new books to help support your efforts. The library's a big recipient, along with an interesting project from the Wycomico County Detention Center, where they have set up a program where the folks who are there, who are assigned there by the courts, can continue to read to their children. So there's, children's books are going there. Christian Shelters, Quota Club, Coastal Hospice, Salvation Army, Stone Grove Apartments, Community of Joy to support the community-free library movement in the community, we're all beneficiaries. So it's a great, it's a great part of this effort, and thank you to the school system for making it possible.
And we'll name some names right now, if that's okay. Some folks that are actually here, if you may wonder who helped coordinate the schools. And I'd like to thank Micah Stauffer who did that. Micah, thank you very much. The principals, obviously, at the schools, but then the media specialists at the schools, James McCoby, Angela Langdon, Erin Neal, Karen Scott, and Kara Brown. The drop-off site was also the Wellness 5K run, and that was Vince Pavick, so we want to thank Vince. And now we got all these books, and then we got to sort them. And that, if you wondered, if you looked at 13,000 books and wondered how you could sort them, in about a couple hours, it's really our media specialists who helped do that, along with library and a few volunteers, right, Dave? So I'd like to thank Ruth Malone and Carl Lewis Lescolette, who really helped get the folks there to help us sort these books. And what we have here is a present for you. These are the last box of new books for Birth to Five, and I think we're exactly in the right buildings. So I don't know who gets them, but there you go. So thank you very much, and thank the school system for all their support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, one looks interesting.
Thank you both for your work. Thank you very much. Thank you. 3.7, superintendent's report. Dr. Hanlon?
Okay, I have a few things. Want to start off, I think a few of the students mentioned this, but I just want to highlight that we had, over the course of this year, six very successful graduations. One mid-year at Evening High School, and then five spring graduations, including Evening High School, and of course, Mardella, Bennett, Parkside, and WyHigh. With a total of, I believe, 917 graduates, 917 graduates, which is just incredible. Don't have a final count on the scholarship money yet, but we've been, you know, just sort of thinking about what was said at graduation. We know we're well over $10 million in scholarship funds, so we look forward to getting those exact figures later in the fall. And just want to commend Mr. Stauffer and his work with our high school principals and the high school principals for very successful graduations. With such large crowds, it's often hard to maintain crowd control while you're also working with students, giving speeches. There were exceptional speeches this year. Just very, very well done, so I wanted to start off highlighting that. And of course, I know board members are very well aware of how successful the graduations were because obviously you handed the diplomas to students, which is a very worthwhile experience, I know. I also want to highlight some additional, we, last month, we highlighted some administrative transfers and promotions. I want to highlight a few of those now. We will be providing a full report of those transfers and promotions and new hires by the end of the day, but just to highlight a few. Dr. Renee Hall will be transferring from the principal of North Salisbury to the new supervisor of reading, based upon the vacancy there. And we will be, Dave Harris will be transferring from Fruitland Primary to being the principal of North Salisbury Elementary School. We congratulate Lisa Forbush on her promotion from assistant principal at Wycomico Middle School to the principal of Fruitland Primary School. Also, we congratulate Commandi, I can never say his, Kimmy, Kimmy Benz, on his promotion from the dean of students at James &amp; Bennett High School to assistant principal at James &amp; Bennett High School. And Jason Capabianco, from his promotion from a teacher at Wycomico High School to the dean of students at James &amp; Bennett. We also have a promotion in Karen Parsons from assistant principal of East Salisbury Elementary to the supervisor of accountability and assessment. And then Tara Parsons will be replacing her as assistant principal at East Salisbury Elementary. That's a promotion for Tara. She is currently a teacher at Glen Avenue. Another transfer, Dr. Kathy Vale from Choices Academy to the principal of Glen Avenue Elementary. As we all know, Lil Giddens, longtime administrator in our system, has announced her retirement at Glen Avenue. We will be posting for the principal position at Choices Academy. Another promotion from assistant principal, excuse me, from dean of students at Wycomico High School to assistant principal at Parkside High School is Mr. Billy Witty. Another promotion from teacher at Salisbury Middle to assistant principal of Salisbury Middle School is Mrs. Jennifer Mudd. And a few other promotions, Keisha Cook is promoted from teacher at Choices Academy to the dean of students at Parkside High School. Chris McLaughlin is promoted from teacher of Prince Street Elementary to the dean of students at Prince Street Elementary. Matthew Curtis promoted from teacher at Pittsville Elementary and Middle to the dean of students at Pinehurst Elementary. And Cindy Becker is promoted from teacher of West Side Primary to assistant principal of our Wycomico Early Learning Center. And finally, we welcome James Hesson back to our county. James was a former dean of students with us. He has been an assistant principal at Delmar Delaware and is coming back to us as assistant principal at West Salisbury Elementary. So, sounds like a lot. The full list will be coming out later this afternoon. So we congratulate all of our promotions in this round of administrative transfers and promotions. Has Delegate Anderton arrived? We may be doing this without Delegate Anderton. So we had a very special treat that came to us from the governor. The day after, I believe, Mr. Harner, the day after our Evening High School graduation, we received, Mr. Harner received, a proclamation from the governor, celebrating our 25th anniversary of our Wycomico Evening High School program. And so, Mr. Harner, would you like to come forward, and we will present this to you on behalf of the governor? Carl Anderton was going to try to be with us, but obviously, he's not arrived, so we will present this. So it reads, Wycomico Evening High School greetings. Be it known that on behalf... Be it known that on behalf of the citizens of this state, in recognition of a special tribute to honor the occasion of the 25th anniversary of Wycomico County Evening High School, with grateful appreciation to the instructors, staff, students, and parents from past and present who are proudly celebrating this important milestone of success. And as our citizens join in expressing our congratulations, great respect, and best wishes for a rewarding and memorable event, we are pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation. So it isn't a proclamation. It's actually a governor's citation. So I apologize for that. Presented on behalf of the governor. So Dave, as the administrator of Evening High School, we present that to you, and we congratulate you and many other administrators who've come before you on the great work of Evening High School.
I think a part of the citation, I think, that was most prudent is both staff administrators, past and present. It took a commitment from past board members and administrators in this county to recognize the need in the beginning and to sustain that effort throughout the years. Board members that attended our commencement received 25th anniversary, kind of commemorative keychains. And, but for those who are not able to attend, I just want to be able to provide you with as well. Mr. Murray? Thank you. In Janu... Did you not? I thought you did in January. You were. My bad. Erase that part from the record, Paul, okay?
Thank you.
And Paul, while you're there, don't sit down. We're going to move right on to extra mile awards.
Okay. This is one of my favorite parts of the Board of Education meeting and one of our best parts of the, each month, because we get to recognize two outstanding employees of Wycomico County Public Schools. Our first extra mile award winner just arrived, just in time. He's nominated for the extra mile award. He's nominated for the Extra Mile Award because he gives 110% of his job. He works extra hours, even late into the evening, planning and working on lessons plans for the following day. He's super willing to learn new and updated information about physical education. He always takes interns and willing to do whatever it is he can to make them into the best possible new teacher. He is all about team building and working as a team to best support students and employees. And he's also willing to participate in extra groups that are outside of the school hours. Now, we're talking about Dr. Harlan Eagle from Chipman Elementary School. The last four years, by the way, he's also put together a 5K race for the WCBOE Wellness Club, and it's all volunteer work for Dr. Eagle. Never complains about going to work, always going with an open mind and open heart to whatever the day brings, and he has done this for over 32 years for Wycomico County. So we want to bring up to the front of the room, Dr. Harlan Eagle from Chipman Elementary. Again, congratulate Dr. Harlan Eagle and Mrs. Perry from Chipman Elementary School for earning the Extra Mile Award for the month of May. And we're not done. We have one more. Our next Extra Mile Award winner is an instructional assistant at Northwestern Elementary School. Her name is Rebecca Insley. She is a special education instructional assistant. She willingly does everything asked of her at the school and more. Now assistants often get moved around from here to there, but she's always there to help out staff and subs who need help. Now occasionally assistants complain about the sudden changes in their schedule that occur, but Becky never does, doing what she is asked with a smile on her face and also making the best of it. She has worked closely with an autistic student this year, and he has made terrific gains in part by the love and care that she has shown him. In addition, she attends every after-school event, every PTA event, and jumps right in to help with what needs to be done. And each month, Northwestern does a food distribution for families in need, and Becky is there helping to organize and distribute the food. Becky is a wonderful asset to Northwestern and Wycomico County schools and truly goes the extra mile. She was nominated by her principal Debbie Engby. So we're going to bring down Rebecca Insley, is she here? Yes. And from Northwestern Elementary School.
Thank you very much.
And finally, we have Mrs. Courtney Jones to provide you with our grants report.
Good afternoon. During the month of May, we have submitted four grants totaling $225,584. One to the Community Foundation for the Eastern Shore, promoting success through meeting, through reading at Fruitland Primary. We also have had two grants for wellness grants that have been funded. One for $16,150, the other for $203,334. And also, the Maryland State Department of Education, the Quality Teacher Incentive Grant for $31,000. We had a very busy month in the month of May. We submitted 12 grants totaling $1,1800, I'm sorry, $185. One to the Walnut Mark Foundation, again, for Fruitland Primary to promote success through reading. The two wellness grants, as well as one to Wycomico Department of Social Services for Project Success for $16,044. The Maryland State Department of Education for Project Move and Summer Slam Programs through Laura Bounes' after-school programs, and also the Step Up Programs that are held at our high schools. We also submitted another to the Maryland State Department of Education for the Eastern Shore Open Education Resources Summer Institute totaling $4,071. The Maryland State Arts Council for a program at Pemberton for storyteller Ariana Ross to do an artist residency. Another to the State Arts Council for Wonderful Willards, promoting or to fund for Mr. Kevin Martin of Rock Creek Steel Drums to offer a residency at that school. Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore, we submitted a readiness campaign to help with our Birth to Five population. Ms. Sandra Drummond submitted that for $7,500. Another for the State Arts Council, again, for the Rock Creek Steel Drums at Glen Avenue. And again, for the Teacher Quality Incentive Program that was funded as well. For FY18, I will have the final numbers at our next meeting, but we requested $2,562,297 and received $2,531,410 from the State Department. For non-state grants, a total of $408,312.75, and we were funded $259,614.61. And combined, $2,976.09.75, and we were funded $2,791,024.61. We've submitted so far for FY19, $4,687,759. I've been extremely busy since January. And we have received $31,000 at this time. For non-state grants, $235,856, and we're funded $203,334. With a combined grant for FY19 at this point, $4,923,615 submitted and funded $234,334. And I stand for any questions.
When you, when we receive a multi-year grant, do you recognize all of those years in the year as received?
No. No, I actually, if you look back into the Excel spreadsheet, I have it separated out for year one, two, and three, and I only put the amount that we have received for that year.
So amount funded on here would include just this, that first year?
Just that first year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So for FY18, funds retained, 93.95%. So if you're a baseball player, that's like a 940 batting average. And from what I've seen of the Orioles, they should take you on. You've got a great batting average, and thank you very much for the work you do.
Thank you very much.
Courtney, when I was in Baltimore, I had a visitor.
You did?
Marvin Black come by to see me, and I shared with me all the good work you're doing here. And he wanted me to tell you hello?
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay. 4.1 approval of minutes from the May 8th regular meeting, the May 15th special meeting, and the May 15th work session. I assume you had time to read those, colleagues on the board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving those minutes signify by saying aye. Opposed? Passes. Okay, so items 5.1 through 5.15 are consent items. So you've had time to read those or their second readings, and so if there's a motion to approve, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Move to approve consent items.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. 6.1. "As per Senate Bill 145 approved by Governor Hogan on April 26, 2016, the Wycomico County Board of Education will change from appointed board to an elected board beginning with the November 6, 2018 election. The new law related to Wycomico County Annotated Code of Maryland Education Section 3-13A-06 reads, 'At the first meeting of the county board in December of each year, the county board shall elect a chair and vice-chair from among the members. Is there a motion to confirm the continuation of the existing officers until the December 10, 2018 monthly meeting?'"
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? So moved. Yes, we're willing to serve. Great question. 6.2. "During the May meeting of the Curriculum Council, the Shakespeare play The Merchant of Venice was reviewed. This play would be added to the approved list of supplemental texts and could be utilized in Grade 10 English Language Arch classes. This play has been reviewed by students, the instructor, and other individuals. In addition, we piloted in one 10th grade English class this school year. The council unanimously recommended that this text move forward to the board for consideration for approval. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve The Merchant of Venice for use in Grade 10 English Language Arch classes for first reading?" And it looks like, I'm sorry.
Move to approve.
And there's a second discussion, Mrs. Malone?
Good afternoon. I am not Ellen Harlan. She was unable to be here today, but she asked if I would present this item, and I was enthusiastic in my volunteering to do so. This is a play that would be added as an approved play. It would provide a Shakespeare choice for our teachers and for our students. We are not removing Julius Caesar, we're just adding Merchant of Venice to that choice. The teacher that piloted it gave us a spirited presentation about the success, the deep critical thinking that her students engaged in, and the overall enthusiasm for Shakespeare that having piloted this particular play generated in her classes. So Curriculum Council was very much in favor. This is a play with some degree of controversy, and she talked to us about how she covered that and why she thought this play is an excellent choice for our times. And I am also an enthusiastic supporter of adding this to our approved listing in 10th grade.
Have you received any negative feedback at all?
We have not.
You know what I found interesting when I read through some of these were when it's this theme of the book, the different takes people had? One was the book was about discrimination, one is mercy is preferable to revenge. What's the other one? Social justice?
Yes.
Which I all, I thought was excellent because this obviously is going to provoke a lot of thought in, in students' minds, in my opinion, as a, as a layman, not a teacher. But that's what I found interesting.
Very much so. And that was one of the reasons why she wanted to pilot it and that she was so interested in having it added to our approved listing.
Any questions?
And this is also for first reading, so if anybody has any comments, they can
That is correct, and we do have a copy of the play. So anyone who wishes to review it there can certainly do so, or there are plenty of summaries that are online.
So are we ready to vote on the first reading? We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. I will relay that to Mrs. Harlan.
Thank you. 6.3. "During the May meeting of the Curriculum Council, a new textbook entitled Auto Collision Repair and Refinishing was reviewed. This text would be utilized for all levels, ATEx, Level 1, Level 2, and Collision Repair. This book has been reviewed by students, the instructor, and individuals serving in the Program Advisory Committee. The council unanimously recommended that this text move forward to the board for consideration for approval. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve Auto Collision Repair and Refinishing for use in Collision Repair for first reading?"
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ashby?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'll speak briefly about this text. For many years, we have used an online curriculum known as iCar. This was a, an idea of students, that they wanted a up-to-date text. We've never had a paper text in this program. And we looked at two. The one we selected has a 2018 copyright that basically covers everything that we do in auto collision, from structural repair, non-structural repair, refinishing. It did have waterborne finishes, which several years ago, we became an EPA certified green shop, so we do use waterborne finishes, and this text had it. The other pieces, in, in addition to the material it covered, it did have lots of online resources that were very engaging, not only to the students, but also our instructor. So we are excited to make this purchase. It will be with FY18 funds. And I have an instructor who asked me before I came, when can I get my materials? So I told him. Hopefully by the end of June, this would be approved at the next meeting. But we are excited. We did a full review with Program Advisory Members, also some other industry representatives, students, and parents, and this book came back with glowing recommendations.
Any questions for Mr. Ashby?
I'd just like to add that as a part of the Curriculum Council, I was on that panel, and the feedback that you got from parents and students was fantastic. They're all highly rated, so. And I saw, also the teacher indicated that most people, when you think about mechanics and things of that nature, don't think about a textbook. But he was very pleased that this textbook would fit exactly what he needed to refer to with his students.
I noticed there were a couple of comments about costs, as that's just people maybe not really understanding the cost of textbooks these days.
It's the nature of the beast, especially with technology and industry texts. Within Wycomico County and at Parkside CT, we're doing the state MSDE professional development for auto collision again this year, and this will be a book that we have out for people to take a look at. It is an expensive text, but in addition, the resources that we get with this text, as well as ongoing support for the next six years, makes it a, makes it a good value in what's out there right now.
Is that roughly the estimated useful life of a textbook like this, roughly?
The technology changes quite quickly, especially with auto collision, so six years would be what we would have as, as far as an expected life.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ready to approve? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. First reading approved. 6.5. "During the May meeting of the Curriculum Council, we reviewed a software product called My Access for use in the secondary schools for the purpose..." I skipped one, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
I did, I'm sorry. 6.4. I could tell, I could feel the eyes going this way. I knew I had done wrong. Sorry. "During the May meeting of the Curriculum Council, a new textbook entitled CNC Programming was reviewed. This text would be utilized for all levels, ATEx, Level 1, Level 2, in high-performance manufacturing. This book has been reviewed by students, the instructor, and the individuals serving in the Program Advisory Committee. The council unanimously recommended that this text move forward to the board for consideration for approval. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve..." Upon the recommendation of the superintendent is there a motion to approve CNC programming for use in high-performance manufacturing for first reading?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Mr. Ashby?
Okay. This text is for our high-performance manufacturing program. Within this program, we have several books that act as resources. We do not have currently what I would consider an elementary or introductory text for CNC programming, and especially, uh, G and M code. Uh, we do teach our kids to write, um, code, to perform both positioning and milling operations. Uh, this book is a, it's actually a Project Lead the Way, uh, book, and we do have our Project Lead the Way engineering program. But we had difficulty finding a book that was, um, one of an introductory nature, that had good graphics, that showed setups, that showed elementary programming, and that was also engaging to the students. This book did fit the bill. Uh, the students thought that, uh, information was presented logically and in a way that they could understand it. Uh, it was clear and precise with, and it wasn't, what they would say, it wasn't wordy. Uh, they did like the pictures and the diagrams. And it also had challenge questions at the beginning of each chapter, which kind of framed their thoughts before they got into a chapter. I don't think this is a text that we will assign and say, you know, you need to read this chapter. We will use it as a resource, um, because we do like to do lots of application. But it is a, um, book that is introductory, and we think will fit the bill quite nicely with students beginning our program in ATEx. It's also a reference that can be used for grade eleven or twelve as well, so it, uh, it fits a variety of needs. It was reviewed, um, as mentioned, by local, uh, CNC, uh, managers, a Warwick student, as well as a local employee in machining. Many students, teachers, and a parent, um, and the reviews came back very, very positive, so.
Any questions for Mr. Ashby? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed on first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, six point five. During the May meeting of the Curriculum Council, we reviewed the software product called My Access for Use in the Secondary Schools for the purpose of providing quality and timely feedback on student writing. We heard from one pilot teacher who presented very positive results and comments about the impact it is having on our students and their writing. This was included as part of the application process of the Striving Readers Grant submitted to the MSDE. The council unanimously recommended that it move forward to the board for consideration and approval pending grant funding. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent is there a motion to approve My Access for First Reading? Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Mrs. Malone, Ms. McSorley?
Good afternoon once again. Um, this is, um, somewhat unusual, because usually we have a funding source before we bring things to you. Uh, this was a major component in our application for the Striving Readers Grant, and we have not yet heard, um, about funding. Um, we are fairly confident we will get some funding, but we don't know how much that is. And you'll notice that this has quite a large price tag. It is artificial intelligence. It does provide timely feedback for students, and their research indicates that most students will, uh, revise and edit a piece of writing upwards of six times before it is actually submitted to the teacher for grading. It doesn't mean that we're taking the teacher out of the equation. It simply means that we can have students do more writing. We can have them get timely feedback, and that helps the conversation that the teacher has. Again, um, it, you will notice that it says it is not funded because we are waiting for it, um, in terms of the Striving Readers Grant, and for more information, I will, uh, look to my great colleague in middle school, E.L.A., Mrs. McSorley.
Thank you. Um, as she mentioned, um, it allows the teachers to, uh, put their own prompts into the program, um, and allows the kids to get automatic feedback on their writing. When the teachers implemented this in the pilot, they called it a game changer, because it allows them to conference with students while not waiting for other students to just sit, you know, waiting for a teacher to come to them, that they can actually get feedback, and the program provides them with suggestions on how to correct mistakes that they do make in their writing. Uh, so we're really excited about it and hope that we do get the funding so that we can, um, implement it as part of our writing program.
Who does the, uh, or where does the automatic feedback come from? Is it like, online with a teacher, and she's going to say, no, you can't do that, or?
It's actually artificial intelligence, so it's actually, um...
So the machine is telling us we're not?
That's, that's correct. Um, and it, that technology has been around for quite some time, but it's becoming more and more perfected, um, so that the feedback is quite good. And in fact, um, we know that in many other instances, um, where there are high-stakes assessments, writing samples are indeed being scored by artificial intelligence.
Do teachers like it?
Um, I think that teachers like it from the standpoint of being able to really improve student writing in a way that is effective and, and timely, because a human reader can only read so fast and provide feedback, um, so rapidly. And this provides it almost instantaneously, so that a student can indeed engage in a lot of revision and get a lot of feedback immediately, that a teacher simply can't do, because they, they're slower than the machine.
I love the write. I drive this program nuts.
Can you explain what kind of feedback you get? Is it, is it grammatical subject material? Is it, I mean, what, what actually does it assess?
It actually gives, um, several, one of which is, uh, conventions. Um, organization, it looks at organization and content. Um, I know the one we were looking at gave options for sentence structure. Um, the other nice component of the program is it provides a report for the student to see where their pattern, patterns of mistakes are, and allows the teacher to do a report of the whole student, um, group. So, small group instruction can occur, because this teacher can say, okay, these students have similar errors. I'm going to pull that small group and work with them on this particular, um, area, so that we're not, uh, it's an ability to differentiate the writing.
So a teacher can set up what, uh, what he or she is looking for in, in a, um, and as the student responds or writes, it'll, it evaluates based on what input from the teacher?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and then actually you can do a printout of the, the, the school and the county. So you could see, for example, in my position, I'm going to look at the county data and say, okay, we have a weakness in this particular area. Then I will be able to provide P.D. to my teachers to then focus on those areas.
And what level of, um, um, skill is it? Can you set that level for the students themselves?
Well, it would be based on the prompt that's included, so i-if the teacher puts in the prompt, that prompt is based on the standards that they teach for their grade. So the teacher puts the gr, the prompt in based on the standards that they're doing or the literature that they're teaching, and then that would, um, and the standards that they have to cover for their grade level.
Is it, I'm sorry for asking so many questions, but it's fascinating. It, is it, can it be used for students that have special needs, or perhaps, um, maybe E.L.L. students also?
Actually, they, um, they, there is an entire component that talks about how supportive they are in E.L.L., and we've looked at that. It allows them to get feedback in their own language, which is a huge, um, advantage for teachers when they're trying to work with students in writing, and you can't work with them in their own language, it allows them to get that feedback.
So if they, if they write in English, but it might respond in their native language?
It might say you have a run-on sentence, but it, it corrects it and gives some feedback in their language.
Hey, a lot of times, uh, a student will write something, and each one has a different individual way of doing something, uh, a writer's technique. Does this program correct the point where it takes the individuality away from that writing?
Well, only from the standpoint of, um,
Format?
It may, it may say that there's a grammatical error, and that may have been a stylistic choice on the part of the student. But no, it, it isn't trying to, um, for instance, take John Steinbeck and make him Ernest Hemingway, no. But, um, it certainly is looking at effective writing and effective communication of ideas.
Fulton, you had a question?
No, not a question. I just think the motion should clarify that it is subject to grant funding.
Yeah, it does say council, uh, but it's not in the motion, actually. So you're saying we should?
Include subject to grant funding in the motion, if that's your wish.
Right.
Because that is the recommendation.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we amend.
The motion?
To include that, uh, it's dependent on funding, grant funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All, and all in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we can vote on the motion. If you have no more questions for the ladies here? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
And as always, thank you so much for your support of our instructional programs.
Welcome. Six point six. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent is there a motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand nineteen Educational Facilities Master Plan, EFMP, as reviewed and discussed in the May fifteen, two thousand eighteen work session for submission to the state? A second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashby?
Mrs. Malone?
Welcome.
Dr. Hanlon, President Fitzgerald, board members. Today, I'm representing Mr. Aki. Uh, he's attending a regional facility planners meeting in Baltimore today, and I'm sure is having a really, really great time learning about the state's implementation of the Twenty-First Century School Facilities Act. I know I'd much rather be here in front of you. Um, as you're aware, and as was mentioned, there was a draft of the fiscal year two thousand nineteen EFMP reviewed in a work session held on May fifteenth. Um, since this date, there have been no major changes. Uh, there was a list provided of some minor items with the final master plan submitted. Um, several facility needs were highlighted in relation to projected enrollments, special initiatives, and major capital needs. Uh, the enrollment bubble was reviewed and its impending impact on the high schools. Uh, the top four capital projects identified were Delmar's Limited renovation, uh, replacement Beaver Run School, uh, the multi-systemic renovation at Parkside, as well as a feasibility study for Mar-Dellametalon High School. Um, a new systemic needs index was introduced, which prioritized and fills the systemic funding bucket. Uh, an initiatives bucket was introduced, including top priorities like the art school, uh, universal pre-K, and safety. Um, if approved by the board today, the EFMP will be submitted to the state, uh, state specifically, the inter-agency com-commission on public school construction before July first, and, uh, will be posted on the board's website. And I stand for any questions you may have.
Are we, um, technically approving this as a, uh, new plan? Or are we just amending it all, the previous year's plan?
You're technically approving it as a new plan.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Six point seven. The Food and Nutrition Services Department is submitting the attached proposed budget for school year two thousand eighteen nineteen and narrative for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. The budget presented reflects a balanced budget with eight million four ninety-one, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand of revenues and expenditures, and an appropriation of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the food service fund balance, and a transfer of four hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund. This general fund transfer is a decrease of a hundred and fifty thousand fi-from fiscal year two thousand eighteen. The Food and Nutrition Services Department is requesting the board to approve an appropriation of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the food service fund balance, hundred and fifty eight, hundred and fifty thousand for phase two of a three-phase, three-year major equipment replacement program, and a hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars for a balanced budget. So that's, that's require a motion from us, right? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Gosley?
Good afternoon, Dr. Hanlon, Mr. Fitzgerald, board members. Um, you've seen the, um, attachment of the summary of the food service program from the previous year. Um, I would like to, um, add to the commu, the C.E.P., the community eligibility provision, that, um, the approval will be based upon, um, MSDE approving us to move those three schools as C.E.P. schools. The C.E.P. program is a program, if you're not aware of it, is a program that allows, if the school qualifies, allows all the students in the school to get breakfast and lunch at no charge to the student. Um, currently, we have five schools in the program, and we are, um, hoping that we can add three more schools next year. Uh, that will help our parents out a great deal with not having to worry about, um, lunch money, um, not having to worry about phone calls on my behalf from Mr. Butler, that they have a negative balance. Um, it, it will be a great asset to our students. Uh, the paid lunch equity tool that we have talked about each year, um, as I said in the summary, this year, there's been provisions made that if you have a fund balance, you don't need to raise your lunch meal prices, so, um, another plus to our parents, that, um, we're not requesting the board to raise our lunch meal prices or our breakfast prices for next year. Our equipment, uh, program, Phase One, um, with the support of our facilities department, will be completed by the start of school, and we will begin Phase Two for, uh, next school year. Throughout the year, or during the school year, um, the state approached us about adding some schools to our MMFA program. And our MMFA program is the Maryland Meals for Achievement, and that's another program where, um, students receive breakfast at no cost to them, again, if the school qualifies. And, um, mid, closer to the end of the school year, in May, they approached us, and, and we were glad to add three new sites as a Maryland Meals for Achievement program. And that would be West Side Primary, Fruitland Primary, and Fruitland Intermediate. Um, we're hoping to add a new position to help us, um, reach our, do more outreach into our community, to our parents. Will be a farms and sales position, um, and that will assist us with implementing food service marketing programs, and again, outreach to our families regarding the farms, applications, and the farms process. And I stand for any questions.
Mr. Gos, so what's the average percentage of the kids who take advantage of the breakfast and lunch at the schools that currently have it?
Um, in our C.E.P. schools, historically, we have about seventy percent of our C.E.P. schools where children are particip- participating. Um, participation runs, it varies from, um, sixty to seventy-five percent.
Any idea why, uh, the others don't, why all don't participate in it?
Why we don't have a hundred percent? Uh, that's, uh, uh, that is a very good question. Um, and hopefully our sales and marketing position will help us with that. Um, and speaking with, with many kids, um, some of them have a preconceived notion. Um, and our goal is to help, um, remove that preconceived notion about, uh, food service, school food service. I mean, it, we are got it by USDA guidelines, so we can't make our food taste like and look like McDonald's food, but we, we do our best to, the, to try to make it as pleasant to them within the guidelines that we have to follow.
Do we have any schools above the intermediate level that where breakfast and lunch is our free, and other, any secondary schools? I guess is my question.
Uh, we don't have any currently. Uh, we have secondary schools that qualify. Um, and we've struggled for a few years trying to get secondary schools in the MMFA program. And part of it is, is a logistical piece. And talk to many of the principals, they're sort of apprehensive because of the time that students are allowed in the building and the time that staff is allowed in the building, um, to sort of help guide the students. to sort of help guide the students to where they need to be.
Do we have other questions? Is this a typical appropriation from year to year? I don't recall what we did last year. I mean...
It's down.
It's down?
Yes.
Okay.
When I came on board, you're, are you talking about the fund balance transfer?
Right.
When I came on board, the fund balance transfer, that was about seven years ago, was about $750,000 a year.
And so the proposed budget is actually lower on expenditures than it is currently? Okay. Just wanna make sure I'm reading this right. Very good? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed, thank you.
Thank you.
6.8, upon the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to approve the budget transfers as presented by the comptroller for the month of June 2018?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Reed.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
President Fitzgerald, Vice President Malone, Dr. Hanlon, board members. You have before you a list of year-end transfers that have been submitted by various directors and department managers. These transfers represent year-end alignment of funds to provide for year-end projects and enable our department managers to bring their budgets within alignment for year-end closing. And I stand ready to answer any questions you have.
Other questions?
None, I've already seen them.
None? Okay.
That was easy, thank you.
I assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's passed.
Thank you.
Jesse, keep up the good work.
Thanks, sir.
6.9, personnel matters is provided as a matter of information, so board members' reports. We'll start with Mr. Palmer this time, to the right.
During our last county council meeting, there's some questions that came up about procedures for purchase cards. And Mr. Ford made an offer for personnel, if they were really interested, to come over and out of the spirit of transparency, to take some time and go through the procedure that he uses when we make purchases with our purchase cards. I did take the advantage of doing that and it was an excellent three hours spent. I've seen what happens when somebody takes that little card and goes out somewhere to get something. When the receipt comes back, where it's inputted into the system, where it's scanned into the system, where the accountant puts it into the budget and codes it as to which type of an item it is. And it's working out pretty good and they're making a modification now so that they can take out food, so if anybody should wanna see a particular item, they can go, will be able to go right into it and find out. So that's a, it's a tremendous program. I recommend that anybody in county government, if they wish to see our program, they're more than welcome to come over and view it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Murray?
Yes, good afternoon. I, first of all, would like to start out in thanking everyone. Of course, the students, we congratulate, but also all of the staff involved in this school year as we come to an end. I have been new here on the boards since September. It's been a wonderful experience for me, but particularly when we hear the reports from our SGA students and all of these board meetings. I was able to attend all of the graduations in Wycomico County, except the adult one, and participated in three of them. And a special part for me was actually being able to congratulate each graduate for all their years, all their hard work, and, you know, and shaking the hands. And also wondering in my own mind, thinking, perhaps I have just shaken the hand of one of our future presidents, maybe of our country. It is, it is so rewarding and there's so much hard work that our students do, but also our staff in this county. And it's without said, you know, I know myself and I'm sure everyone else, thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald, we get to hear directly from you this month, which is a blessing.
Well, thank you. I want to thank you for stepping in since April. It's been a hard, hard thing to do, sit back and not be able to say anything. A week ago Friday, they gave me this little thing here that allows me to talk. I'm gonna keep that for a few more weeks and then, well, they're gonna make evaluation on me. But I kept up with what was going on. And again, this organization, and I hope everybody's looking, the WCBOE is the best in the state of Maryland, barring none. Just look at the students that graduated and what they've done and what they are doing. It's a, it's an honor to sit up here and represent these students, especially the ones that don't have the support it owns, that needs our support. It's an honor to do that. It was an honor, just like Mr. Murray said, to be there. I only did one this year because I was just returning back from Baltimore, but I had the pleasure of being at JMB, to pass out diplomas with Mr. Turner. And it went very well. So to you students sitting here, two of you are gonna be replacing the current presidents. All I can say to you is, fill those shoes, even though they might be big, fill them for next year. Use your ideas, because that's what it's all about. It's about you all. What we set up here and do, it's not for Don Fitzgerald, it's for the students of Wycomico County. So with that said, just like I told county executive yesterday at North Salisbury, I got my voice back. You're in trouble. So again, I have to watch how long I talk. But again, we're going forward and it's an honor, Gene, to work with you and for what you do for this board. I want to thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. You're certainly welcome. It's an honor to serve with you. And we're glad you're talking again. Mr. Brown?
I had an opportunity to attend a couple of awards programs. I went to the CTE program and it was very interesting. I've attended them before, but it's also great to see that the same kind of successes are continuing. Many of the kids who graduate from that program either go on to further their studies in that particular area, or they already have jobs, which is much in demand. And a number of them were, had been out doing their fieldwork and they had their representatives from their positions that they were working for, were there congratulating them as well. So it's good that we have the CTE program and I think if we can continue to look at what the community needs and bring those kinds of programs to the school system, that will be an asset to the county. Also an opportunity to go to Mar-Della, a small school, but gosh, those kids received all kinds of scholarships, lots of money. Be interesting to see how much money, all total, those kids, not only in Mar-Della, but across the county, received in scholarships. And the number seems to grow each year. Third thing is, gosh, I went to the program that we have for our retirees. Some of those folks are gonna be hard to replace. When you've got somebody that's been there 50 years, they haven't been there 50 years because they don't care. They've been there 50 years because they enjoy what they're doing and they feel a personal interest in the county and working with kids. We had a couple of them that were like 45 years, I think, and another 40 years. And to get those caliber of folks, it's gonna be a task for the administration here at the central office, because those individuals were, were well-known in their respective schools and their communities as well. The other thing is, I went to the awards recognition at James and Bennett last week and, gosh, again, I think, Rowan, you were there, to see all the things, not only the students are doing, but also staff as well, throughout the county, but not only in the school, because I believe one of our awards went to Jay, his room. And those are people who not only do things for the kids in school, but they do things for kids outside in, in the community. So that's a, a big plus for our school system. So again, it's been a pleasure coming back in this kind of capacity and seeing the successes that you're having and want you to continue to do good work.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Turner?
Sure, I'd just like to thank our facilities group, or at least that's what I'm gonna call you today, for the, the tour at West Side this past week. I think that school's gonna have a really great impact to that community. I think our county executive and county council missed a really terrific opportunity to have an even bigger impact when they did not approve what our original request was, which is probably twice the size of what it is. But beautiful school, amazing, and it was really fun to go out and see it. Thank you. Just wanted to wish everybody a, a fun and safe summer too.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. So I've been referring to my board report as Gene's Travels, but, so, I did many of the same events as my colleagues, the service awards, amazing. The graduations, to get to shake that many hands of some fine young students from our system. I did a guest reader at Willards Elementary in early June and read to a kindergarten class, which is always invigorating, because I always ask them for questions and then they just fire them at you and it's, that's just great. The West Salisbury tour was absolutely outstanding, as Mr. Turner talked about. That's a great new school for us. The year-end awards, recognizing retirees, students. Yesterday at the North Salisbury, it's the spotted turtle, right, that the governor came down for, that was amazing, those, what those young people could do with composure, to stand up there and read all those things and go through all that and make those presentations was amazing. That was the biggest part of it. But I guess the highlight for my board report is that in early May, I got a call from junior achievement, because I've done that before, and they said, would you like to do a junior achievement? I said, no, really, I'm pretty jammed up. Well, I think you'll wanna do this for this class in Delmar. It's a third grade class, Kayla Malone teaches it, which is my daughter-in-law, and they don't have a junior achievement teacher for that week, so what obvious answer could I give? But yes, okay, I'll do that. So it was wonderful, but here's the part that was educational for me. And every morning, I'm up at 5:00 in the morning, cutting up the little things that, that you do and making sure that I've got a lesson plan and figuring all this out. And then my adrenaline's pumping as I'm riding there and it's like 45 minutes and then you're like relieved when you leave. And it took me to the third morning I'm doing this and my wife, Donna, gets up and I tell her what's going on. I said, man, this is a lot of work. She said, really? That's what teachers do every day, dear. So bang, you know, really, that's the honest truth. It just hit me, like, this is what, that our teachers and, I'm sure supervisors, administrators, are doing every single day. I'm doing it for five days, 45 minutes each day. And honestly, when I left there, like, I felt the energy drain out, because you're pumped up to try to keep these third graders engaged. And not experienced in that, if it wasn't for Mrs. Malone helping me, I would've been out of control. But the lesson for me is, you really have to appreciate the teachers and the staff that we have in this county. And Mr. Fitzgerald said it best, is bar none, it's the greatest school system ever. And I watched all these young people and I watched Kayla, who would say, like, count one, two, three, she had some witty saying and they would just fall in line, and I'm saying, please, stop, stop. We have a talented workforce in this county and we should all be very appreciative of that. All the folks that are watching, they should be very thankful that we have, who we have. And graduate, the students we graduate, because they go on to do great things. So thank you all very much. And with that, we're adjourned.